Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the governing board of the Fallbrook Union Elementary School District. It is 5:00 PM. I call our meeting to order. We have a hearing session for our closed session portion of our meeting. Mrs. Lopez, do we have any comments?
We do not.
Okay, then with that, we will adjourn directly into closed session. We will return when we are complete. Thank you. Good evening and we are returning from closed session. We are beginning the regular portion of our governing board meeting. And it is now 6:00 PM. Let us, oh, there was no action taken during closed session, so we can move directly to flag salute. Say, who would like to do flag salute? Mrs. Lopez, thank you.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes of our August 15th regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Make a motion. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any corrections, comments? Let's start with Mrs. Lieber.
I abstained because I was not in.
Oh, okay, we have one extension. Right, and Mr. Pivella?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez, hi. And we both eyes well, thank you. Minutes are approved. We move to reports from the board. So tonight I'm going to do something a little bit different. Usually I'm the last one to go. Today I'm going to be first. And that's because we got some very good news last week. And the news we got was that our superintendent, Dr. Candace Singh, was chosen as the 2022-2023 Exemplary Woman in Education. And it was by the Association of California School Administrators. This award was created to highlight exceptional female leaders who have shown a passion for education, advocated for the value of public schools, and demonstrated effective crisis leadership during unprecedented times. As an educator for over thirty years, Dr. Singh has demonstrated a passionate commitment to the students in her school districts. She shows the highest respect for the teachers, staff, and parents and colleagues with whom you work. Well, we are a district with just 5,000 students. But we are so fortunate to have such a seasoned and talented educational leader working with us and our students. One of your colleagues, Dr. David Mia Shiro, who is superintendent of the Cajon Valley Union School District, had the following to say. "Dr. Candace Singh is in a class by herself, both as a superintendent and as an advocate for the education community at large. In my twenty-plus years of experience working in school districts, I've met very few individuals who embody both passion and compassion the way Candy does." Dr. Singh, you are in a class by yourself, and we are a most fortunate district to have you as our superintendent. Now we will move to the other board members. And see, I don't do that very often, so. Let's see, Mrs. Lieber, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you. I have just a clarification about the agenda. The last item says personnel. Is this other personnel other than superintendent's evaluation? Because I was not given anything to prepare or to read.
There is no additional information for that.
So it's just the superintendent's evaluation?
That's good.
Okay, thank you. So, let's see, I have been working hard on the superintendent's evaluation and preparing for this board meeting by reviewing all the district bylaws. Because we were going to have a few closed session, I mean, earlier closed session, and I wanted to be clear on our responsibilities. So that is some of the work I've been doing this last week. I missed the last meeting for transportation reasons. I had a little glitch, but I did watch the meeting online. And I would like to thank our superintendent for providing us with the link to all of the great curriculum we are being offered, our students, our teachers for our students for Constitution Day. That was one of the speakers, and I was really, I am passionate about Constitution Day because I am also a civics teacher, and I see the value of bringing up our kids to understand what a democracy takes to keep it intact. And so I was really impressed that right away she sent us all a sample of the material, and we have been teaching this every year. So I was, but I love to see the material, and of course, I'm going to be using it in my class, so thank you for providing me with that. And then, but I teach it at an adult level. And the second thing is we have Ken Strasky speak at that meeting very passionately. And I just want to thank both of them because it's a lot of work to come into a board room, prepare a speech, give it to the board. And I thought both of them were very eloquent, and I am sorry I missed that meeting, but I did get to watch the copy of the meeting. And other than that, I think that is the end, except unless you guys think, did I forget anything? Have we all, have you all done something that I did with you and forgot? No, that's the end of my board report.
Thank you.
Sure. Well, it's been a long one, since our last meeting, but what I've done in between this time was back to school night, attended back to school night, and my eldest had a chance to speak with my son's third grade teacher and my daughter's sixth grade teacher. Actually, they have a set of teachers, so because they're co-teaching. And I think that was very interesting to see that happening. And very, I think it's a great model that's happening there at our school for the teaching of immersion to language. So as far as what I've done so far.
Remember, you said that, I think you asked your daughter on her first day of school, how did, you know, what did you like about it? And she said, I liked everything.
Everything, yeah, so they're having a great time at school.
Great. Lopez?
I really haven't been doing much, I don't think, but I did want to also comment on our superintendent's award. I think it's really incredible that we have a leader in you, Candy, that, I mean, if we look around what's happening, not only in our state locally, but also in the nation, with teachers going on strike and with parents not being happy with still COVID regulations. We're so blessed to have you here and have the fact that our schools are open. We've negotiated well with our unions, both classified and certificated. Our kids are in good hands. We have, we have adequate number of teachers where a lot of districts don't. You know, we, we've been taking care of our people because of you, so I think it's important to certainly congratulate you for the award, but I'm not surprised by it because I think you do a tremendous job for us here in Boston.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to also congratulate Dr. Singh on her award. It was very well deserved.
Thank you.
I attended back to school night at Potter with my son, and it was such a well-organized event, so efficient. The first half hour was an assembly of all the, all the families where Dr. Powers talked a lot about the portrait of the eighth grader, which was, it was so beautiful to see up there, that, you know, synthesis of everything we did with that. And then she also talked a lot about Potter Pride, which is their positive behavioral system that the students developed with the teachers and came up with things that the students wanted, like a pizza party, not just for them, but for their, for, for their friends, I think. So there, there are some incentives that the kids really bought into. And then we got to meet all the staff, the counseling staff. And then, then we did the tour around. We got our student schedule and we had, you know, just enough time to get to the class. And it was really fun, all parents walking around going, where am I going? I gotta get to class. And, and then we had a few minutes in each class to meet the teachers, and I met some of our new teachers to the district who seemed like wonderful additions. And then some of our, our teachers who've been here for many years. And I've seen, I've seen such a positive growth at Potter just in the few years that I've been on the board. And I'm really, I'm really happy with what is going on right there right now, and I'm really grateful that my own son is part of it.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna really enjoy his last year in our district. And as you all know, my other hat is with the Fallbrook Land Conservancy and our Save Our Forest Environmental Education Program Committee has been working on our fourth and fifth grade environmental ed classes with the district, and we've got those all scheduled, and we are now looking for volunteers.
Yeah.
So I will be sending out those dates if anyone would like to come out and have a lot of fun helping kids plant. And along those same lines, the Fallbrook Land Conservancy is having our annual open house and fundraiser on October 2nd. It's Stagecoach Sunday over at Palm Mary's House on Stagecoach Lane, and that's one of the ways we raise money to do things like the environmental education program. So I'd like to invite the entire community there to be a part of that. And lastly, yesterday I attended the 9/11 Memorial Hike at Montserrat Mountain. And it's a community event that was organized by one of the members of Chamber of Commerce. And it was really nice this year because he, he included a lot of our youth groups from around the community. We had scouts from BSA Troop 731 and 700. We had the Miss Fallbrook Court there. And some young singers from the InVoice Studios who sang some patriotic songs. And it was, it was really moving. And then retired Colonel Bob Hillary spoke and gave us all a great lesson. And so it was just really neat to see so many of our, our students and former students out there. You know, they've learned about this in class. They've, they've gotten the history, and then they were able to be part of this, this community event that really brought it to life. And they, they represented us very well. I love them. Thank you.
I forgot. Thank you. Mrs. Lieber's reminded me that I wear another hat. So I just want to let you all know that Rally for Children is coming up with their annual fundraiser. It will be October 20th. And if anybody is interested in that information, I certainly would have it for you. It's the only fundraiser that we do each year to raise the funds to have the money for arts in the park, which we were able to do this last year back in person within collaboration with Fallbrook Unified School, Elementary School District. So it's a really important thing for us. So again, if anybody's interested in that, please let me know. And then we will also be hosting a booth at the Harvest Festival with pumpkin decorating for kids. And it's one of the only booths there that's free for everybody, so we try to get the word out to all families in the area that we will have pumpkins and people and their kids can come and decorate them. And when we run out of pumpkins, which we seem to do every year, no matter how many we buy, the kids will be able to wear ma, make masks.
And then they can come over to our booth and do some leaf rubbing.
There you go. Perfect. So, so those things are going on for Rally for Children.
So it's terrific. Thank you very much. Dr. Singh, would you like to give your report?
I'd be happy to. You know, typically I don't provide a slide, but I did today. Just what I wanted to share out with you tonight. Thank you, Mr. Trench. I wanted, I, I'm really excited and pleased for my update tonight to be able to share with you just the first round of data that we have back now from our cast results of our students. And we are so excited and pleased that I wanted to take an opportunity to show it to you tonight, but there was a lot of numbers, so I thought I'd give you a visual. And, and you also have it in a paper form right here, but I want to just take one quick second and just let's remember, because I want to share the assess, end of your assessment results with you in just a second. But I want to go back and, and remember some of these things that we've talked about before and how unusual last year was. Because it's, it's important for us to remember what we were up against during the year last year and, and looking at the kind of growth our kids made is super exciting. But remember, we were in masks for the first two-thirds of the year and all the things we were doing with distancing and stable cohorts and the kids in play zones on the playground. And you'll remember in January and February when we were really hanging on by our fingernails with lack of substitutes and, and so many of our own staff members going out sick that we were doing all of the contact tracing and all of the testing with our nursing team. It feels, when I think about it, it feels like it was so long ago. But it really wasn't that long ago, and the impact that it had on our classrooms. I also want, you've seen these numbers before, but I just want to remind you because we had almost 17,000 lost days of instruction. Half our staff had COVID leaves of some sort. Remember, all during this time, we've added new teachers. A third of our teaching force is new last year. That number could be a hair higher now. And that number of COVID tests is, is also higher now. You know that also our kindergarten, first and second graders last year had really never experienced even a normal full year of school. So I say all of this to just remind us that even in the midst of the challenges we were experiencing, this is the growth of academic growth that our kids have made. And we want to just take a look at this as the, our first blush from the fall, when we assessed our students and where they were coming back from the year before, which, you know, the kids weren't even in school full-time, right? To, and the loss, academic losses that the kids had and declines that they had. That's where, where we were starting after all of those challenges that we had experienced from the two years before. The end-of-year CASP results that reflect now the absolute incredible work of our teachers and our classified support staff, our principals, and our district office in the ways that we supported our schools and the work that our teachers did in our classrooms. You can see in the majority of grade levels in both subject areas, double-digit growth. And it's very, very exciting. We're digging into this now, and each individual school teachers are doing their own analysis of their classes and of their, and, and at their grade levels with principals. But I wanted you to see right away the overall growth that is indicative of the incredible work that has gone into helping our students recover from this pandemic. And it's just incredibly exciting and to see and quite celebratory the work that's happened and the work that our students have done and in support of our families, our parents, and everyone working together to help our kids rebound after such a challenging time. And I, and I want to tie it to this, and the things that you as a governing board have supported us in doing. The additional resources that we have been able to put in place in our district over the last two years is, has been exceptional. And I don't need to read all these to you, but significant strategies such as the lower class sizes that we still have maintained. We have full-time counselors, behavior technicians, social workers in all of our schools, intervention literacy coaches, math TOSSAs, which is a new element for us, as you know, this year because we're really targeting bringing those math results up. Intervention programs. Mrs. Perez, our new director of after-school learning opportunities, we're so pleased. The continuation of innovation lab teachers. And then this additional list, and, and we're so excited about all of these things. These two slides don't even really represent everything we've done, but they're really, really the big ones. And, and how we've worked very, very hard to align the resources to get the kind of academic growth that we've gotten. And what's exciting about it is that it's a warm engine, is the way that I see it. Because the, coming into this year with that kind of gain is something we should really all be celebrating. And now we are beginning this school year with a lot of stability, a lot of resources already in place. And we want to now continue to support our teachers and principals to do the hard work that they're doing to continue to bring this kind of academic growth to our students. But when we, as we've been getting into the data, we couldn't be more proud and grateful for the, for the work that's going on in our schools. And I know you would be too. So I just wanted to take your welcome, take a chance to share it with you. You bet.
Can I have a question?
You bet.
Can we go back to the slide that shows the CASP growth?
Sure.
So my question is, fall 2021, what test was used?
So that's the STAR 360 assessment that we use, as you know. There was no CASP result for two years before.
Right.
The STAR 360 tests the same standards as the CASP. It also tests the same focus standard as the CASP. So what'll be good for us, and if you remember, in that long workshop we did, it is the assessment that we use that is highly predictive of how the kids will do on the CASP. So this is our opportunity to compare the standards that were tested in the fall and then the standards again and how the kids did in the, in the spring.
And STAR 360 can actually be put against a CASP test?
It can, yeah, because it is a comparison between the same standards and the same focus standards.
And is it done manually, or is there a program that we run it through?
We just have, we just have our fall results. This is, this was our baseline after the years of COVID.
Okay.
And then CASP is where we ended the year.
Okay.
Our CASP results now going forward, what will be great, when the, when the dashboard comes out now in the, in probably hopefully around December. The state is reworking the dashboard because, as you know, in the past, the dashboard was based on growth. We don't have growth now. We, it'll be a status report, not a growth report, because we don't have CASP results for two years. And so obviously, how much has happened during that two-year period? Our interest is, as you know, our number one goal is that every student grows academically, right? And this, this is now a beautiful indicator that our kids are moving in the direction of this kind of academic recovery from the setbacks they've had.
And one last question.
Sure.
So when you're looking at these numbers, we're looking at percentages.
Yes.
So it went from, when you're looking at all in English language arts in the fall and the STAR 360, there is 38% proficient?
Yes.
Okay, and now it's 50% proficient, and in math, it was 27% proficient and 34% proficient. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And this is very similar to what you showed us this summer of the, where we compared STAR 360 from the fall and the spring.
Yes. In the, in the data analysis workshop we did with you at that point, we were looking at the growth on the STAR 360 because we hadn't seen the CASP results yet. And in fact, our CASP results resulted in, in almost every circumstance, higher than our STAR 360 results did. Our kids did better on the CASP than, as, as they moved along throughout the year. So what'll be great here is that we'll now have a baseline. We'll now have a baseline again for measuring the growth that, that we're looking to see after, after the two years of the setback the kids have had.
Do we know, have we gotten data on CASP larger picture statewide?
We don't know yet. And that's that they're not releasing all of that information yet until the dashboard is ready. So we're waiting for that because that'll be, that'll be also a helpful comparison to us. But I want to just, I want to end with this. Number one, we're just, we're so proud of our kids and our teachers and support staff. This doesn't happen on accident. This is really, double-digit growth is significant growth. And it's really due to the incredible work of the people in our schools and our district office who is supporting our folks at our school sites. So we're, we're really, really pleased and very excited for the year ahead.
Great.
So, so that's all I have, Mrs. Lundin.
I actually have a question.
Sure.
So this, I love this last slide. It really says it all. Would it be possible to do something like have a little spot on our website? That's a thank you, and you click on it and you see all of these bullet points on these two pages with a little dash next to each one with just maybe a sentence explanation? Because, you know, when you look at both of these pages, there's a tremendous amount that's happening now that wasn't happening three or four or five years ago, and very exciting. And I think that it's, it's a story to tell.
For sure.
And I think that parents who are considering sending their kids here should know that this is what their children would have the availability, that, you know, have as part of their education. So if there were a way to do that, those are the three pages, I think, that it's just, I like how you did it. It really just punches the main point. But for some folks who might not know what all this is.
Absolutely.
You know, and I break out social workers because they're separate from, well, counselors, yes, they are.
They are. But, but yeah, it's really, it's great. Because we know what all these are. We've been talking about these for two years, right? We, every board meeting, we've been talking about these for two years and the ways that we have spent the money that's come to our district to align it so carefully to what the kids need, that having a little description would be, would be helpful for someone who didn't know what they were.
Because I remember when I started on the board, I didn't know what a TOSA was.
Right.
You know, absolutely.
What's a TOSA?
Absolutely.
Not to seem dumb, but.
Now I know what.
If you see Spotlight, it's really doing, so we have a social media campaign called If You See Spotlight coming out in the next thirty days, actually highlighting one of these programs every single day and the people that are with them. So we're doing portraits of all these people and interviewing them. So that'll be, you'll be seeing over the next month or so on social media, a lot of these being highlighted daily, so.
But let's have one like on our.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to know that really goes hand in hand with that.
Yeah. It's just, it's such great information to share, and I can't wait to go on Facebook. I don't usually look at them. All right, great.
Okay, thank you. You bet. Happy to. You bet.
And now we are at the hearing session of our board meeting. Just want to remind everyone who's here that if you should be commenting at today's meeting, we're, we're very anxious to hear what you have to say. If we don't respond, it's because unless something is already on our agenda by law, we're not allowed to respond because it hasn't been agenda. So please don't take that as our not being interested. We are, but we can't say anything back. But we are hearing, and in some cases, you know, we're able to take some follow-up action. Really appreciate it. So I turn this over to our board clerk, Mrs. Lopez. Do we have anyone who signed up to speak today?
We do. So we have Sandra Forrest, who would like to speak to us about board expenditures.
Yes, please. Good evening. Can you, Mrs. Forrest, can you speak into the microphones?
Oh.
Thank you.
My camera ready. Good evening. We're number one. We're number one. We're all used to hearing this chant at many events such as football games, soccer tournaments, and other competitions. Unfortunately, that chant applies to the total salary and benefits package of Candace Singh, superintendent of this school district. She is currently second for all of San Diego County, but only by $6,000, a small gap, considering that it compares a district with under 5,000 students to one with almost 17,000. Based on the ratio of salary to students, we're already number one. And remember, her salary already surpasses that of the superintendent of LA Unified as well as San Diego Unified. I am not cheering. I've been following her superintendent's salary for over two years since her last raise was approved, as it has been a public topic in local newspapers, regional online articles, various websites, blogs, et cetera. Only one person on that governing board voted no back then on Dr. Singh's raise, and that was trustee Karen Lieber. Recently, information has been posted on social media that yet another salary increase might be in store for Dr. Singh. Unlike the meeting of two years ago, voting for any raise is supposed to adhere to Government Code 53262, which specifies "All contracts of employment with a superintendent, deputy superintendent, assistant superintendent, blah, 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 shall be ratified in an open session." Government Code 54953 requires that quote. Prior to taking final action, the boards shall orally. Prior to taking final action, the boards shall orally support a summary of recommendations for final action on the salaries during the open meeting in which the final action is to be taken, unquote. The superintendent's salary is a topic separate from her performance. All employees in this district have a cap on their salary except the superintendent. Her contract was written at least twelve years ago. Over time, all employment contracts are subject to change and it is time for hers to be revised and if necessary renegotiated. It should be reviewed not just by in-house counsel, but by a disinterested third party, a licensed attorney from outside the district. Who specializes in contract law. Shouldn't everyone be entitled to a second opinion? If we are to cheer, we are number one. It should be for being number one in student academic achievement improvement. Having the lowest class sizes, providing the best classroom and extracurricular activities, number one in positive parent participation, et cetera. I am old enough to remember the late President Harry Truman and his famous saying, the buck stops here. And I mean, the buck stops here. This board is require, all go, all boards are required to follow government ed codes related to salary, public meetings, et cetera. I urge this governing board to vote no on any measure which would increase the already excessive compensation of the current superintendent. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers, Mrs. Lopez?
We do not.
Alright, moving on through our agenda. Takes us to business services. We do have an action item. Do I have a motion to approve? Resolution number three dash twenty-two slash twenty-three, and that is adopting the GAN.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? No, alright, Mrs. Levis, your vote.
Hi.
Lopez.
Hi.
Mrs. Pabella.
Hi.
Lieber.
Hi.
I vote I as well. Motion passes. Um, and then I understand we have a report from our chief financial officer regarding unaudited actuals.
That's right.
For twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, Mrs. Cindy Martin.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, thank you.
And while we're doing that, someone asked me today, they said, I thought your meetings were always on the first and the third Monday. And I said, well. The exceptions during the year are when we have financial reports that need to be presented and, and approved, and this is one of those meetings.
Correct. The statutory, um, requirement is that this be approved by the governing board and submitted to the county office of education by September fifteenth. And so we would either be way too early and not allow enough time for what is already a crunch time, or we would go beyond. The date and be in violation of what we are required to do. So yes, this, uh, typically the first and second interim are the ones that we might have adjustments, but. Uh, our budget adoption, we follow the first meeting in June with the public hearing and then the second meeting with the adoption. Good evening, governing board members, colleagues, um, audience members in attendance here and those I believe were still, uh, on virtual Zoom land. It is my pleasure and excitement to provide a brief, yes, brief overview of our unaudited actual, the closing of the books. There, it is a hundred and twenty-two page report that was included in the agenda. And I promise I'm not going over nearly any number close to that, uh, that size of the report. But before I start, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge and to, um, recognize. Two people in the very back there, Mrs. Lindsay Pillen and Mrs. Sheila Duncan. Lindsay is our accounting supervisor. And, uh, Sheila is our payroll supervisor. And as you may recall, we did some restructuring. Um, uh, this is the first year that we implemented it. And if it wasn't for these two individuals. This report and what I'm about to share with you would not nearly be as good as it is. So, uh, we continue our, the, the methods that we use in maximizing our revenues, but they deserve so much. Thank you, kudos and respect. And when I get to the specific numbers and pages, I would ask them to stand up, but they're too shy and. Modest to do that. So let's get going here. Uh, unaudited actuals, uh, such a strange term for a report. So what is it? It's the end of fiscal year report that covers July one through June thirtieth of, of, of given fiscal year. And it includes the actual amounts that we spend and receive. Most of the time what you hear me reporting on is the budget, which is a plan, what we anticipate spending and receiving. But when it comes to the actuals, this is really now what did we spend and we've received. So when I talk about what's received, that's really our revenues. What we spent is expenditures. The carryover is what is our ending fund balance. You might see the acronym EFP. And then our reserves, that's a component of the ending fund ballot, but there's a statutory requirement for that as well. Wanted to kind of, um, just show you in bigger pictures because I'm often asked by my son of all people, how much money does the school district have? And when I tell him this, whoa, he's quite impressed, as, as am I. So this past year that we just finished up, our total revenues, you can see there were the eighty-nine point five million and our total expenditures were eighty-eight million. What I want to point out here is because with you, you know, uh, something I'm very sensitive about is this term deficit spending. And as you can see, has been the history that I know of since I've been here in two thousand and four. By the time we close the books, we don't deficit spend. However, there have been newspaper articles, there are comments that the county office is required to make about a district's deficit spending. And so I just wanted to show you in one simple look that when I do say, trust me, we're in good financial standing and we don't deficit spend. We don't by the end of each year. The other thing I wanted to point out because we have received, um, as have, has, uh, have many other districts. Such a substantial increase in funding you've probably heard about. And so I went back to two thousand nineteen, twenty, which was the year of the pandemic. Um, keep in mind that that was March of two thousand twenty, but back then. Our budget was sixty-nine million dollars. So you can see almost a twenty million dollar increase in revenues and expenditures from not too long ago. And that is part of the reason why, in addition to the careful planning and. Under Dr. Singh's leadership and guidance, that we're able to do so many of the things and provide so many of the services that were on that bulleted list there. So it just really put into perspective when the two people that I mentioned back there. And I were working feverishly, like, why is there so much more? There's a significant amount of money with a significant number of programs tied to each one of those, uh, uh, dollars, actually. So I tried to summarize for here, for you here, because this is really what it comes down to of that hundred and twenty-two page report. This is what's key, this is what's important, and this is what will have a district in the newspaper, good or bad. So for this, I wanted to make sure that it was clear and, and, and understood. Our, the districts are required to have the three percent reserve for, um, economic uncertainty, and that's been in statute for probably ever. What we do, and it, and a phrase that you've heard me say over and over and over, and I will say until I'm no longer here, is maximizing revenues. Really working, and that's really the work that, uh, these two people, in addition to the staff of the accounting department, helped in doing. And when I say maximizing remedies, what we're doing is we're taking all of these sources of funds. And we're really applying what, how can it be spent? How can it best be spent? What limitations does it have? When does it have to be spent? How do we have to report it? And really, um, maximizing and doing the most with it so that we can end up saving our unrestricted general fund money. To do things that we feel and that the board feels and the community feels is best for our students here, not just what is mandated by the state. So if you look at that, the three million dollars is our three percent. You can see there that through careful saving, planning, thoughtful strategic planning. An additional four point five million dollars was, I don't want to say saved, but was, um. Set aside and, and it's been listed in these categories. So that we could do the things that we feel are important here. This is beyond what we reported to you at the second interim report. On the, uh, the, the next, were the additional nine point three million, that already existed. When I reported to you at second interim, we had nine point three million dollars and it was set aside for our learning recovery plan. Remember, that's a three-year plan that we developed. Last year, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two year being the first year of implementation. This year we're in right now is the second year and then, um, next school year will be the third year. But in that plan is where we had talked about the lower class sizes and having that already budgeted. So even if we received not one additional cent from the state or federal government in order to do these things. We have this money reserved and set aside to continue to do so. Should the board decide that that's something to continue beyond that. That's where we want to make that, those funds available so that you have the choices and the decisions that you make. So putting that all together. With all of the planning, with all of the hard work, thank you, the sleepless nights and everything else that went along with it. It totals nearly seventeen million dollars that has been set aside. Now, I want to, I want to point out. That's one-time money, so it is not ongoing. And it, uh, we have designated or committed. Much of it there already, so it's not just available and that we don't know what to do with. However. It is with the superintendent's, um, leadership and thoughtfulness. And I would say the people like Mrs. Perez, I'm going to talk about the, um, after-school program in a second. But, but really the thoughtful planning that I've seen and experienced here over the years that I've been here. That we're able to set these funds aside and really work collaboratively to do what's best for the students. So, um, I'm very proud that this district is, seems to be what I consider a pioneer in the area of really trying to find out what can we do? Not just what the minimum says we have to do or what the requirement is, but what is it that our kids need to be successful? What is it our teachers need to be successful? And then. It, what excites me about that is I'm not in the classroom, I'm not at a school site. But knowing and being a mother, having a student that's here in this district. And really trying to help and assist in the ways that we can, let's find this money. So we get excited. We're making all these transfers and doing things and, and, um, for Ms. Pillen over there, Mrs. Pillen, this was, you know, her first time of going through this. And working late and we're sending things back and forth, but when I was able to tell her what you just did, save two million dollars. It's huge. And so it makes it all worth it for sure. Um, but anyways, this is huge. This is something to be very proud of. This is because of the careful planning, um, by, with the leadership of Dr. Singh, with cabinet su- uh, support and implementation. With the directors, all the way down to teachers and instructional assistants, custodians, everybody's a part of this. And, um, I couldn't be more proud. This is a, a financial report, but I really think that, you know, you here put your money where your mouth is. And there it is. So it's something that I would, um. Like to share with you so that you too can feel that pride and, um, also thank you for the trust that you have. In your, um, administrators and your leadership team to help carry these plans out and make the decisions necessary so we can end up like this. There were some questions asked before, and so I tried to weave it in here about the expanded learning opportunity program. This is a huge program, both in, um, scope and dollar amount. Uh, it's extremely important and, uh, to the governor. This was something that he felt was key to, uh, not just the learning recovery, but also to helping families in getting back to work and providing. After school, before school, outside of school, I should say, not just care, but programs that will really help, um, our kiddos succeed. So it, it was, it was a significant amount of money that was given. It was one point nine million dollars that we received for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. When we closed out the books, we have one point seven five million remaining, so that's going to carry over. This year, the estimate is, uh, over five million dollars that we'll be receiving for this program. This is an ongoing program. So this is not one-time money. This is out of Prop ninety-eight money, so it will continue and it counts towards the state's requirement of what they must spend on education. So you can see we have almost seven million dollars available this year, um, to spend on our, our after-school program. Mrs. Perez and I actually have a meeting tomorrow to kind of refine now that we know what the carryover is. What, what the budget. Um, so this may be news to her about what's actually available. We literally finished this on Friday afternoon. Um, and then I was celebrating over the weekend of both finishing that and personal things. So here we are back today. But you can see here the budget that we have that's included, um, in that big report is, uh, our central staffing. Our site staffing, and when I say site staffing, we have intervention teachers, lead teachers, I know are later on the agenda, social workers, clerks to support the program. We have our camps, that's both the summer, super, I can't say it, like Dr. Houston. And then all of our, uh, intercession programs for the fall, uh, the, and the spring, and, and we have winter as well, all three, that'll be, uh. I know, it's, it's awesome what's going on. The contracted services, we have a extensive partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. And then some of the other contracts you've seen on the, uh, consent agenda. And then we have a reserve. Now that three million dollar reserve, let me tell you, that is really Lily Perez and I need to meet and discuss and go back and refine. And see where, not only how it can be spent, but I so appreciate Mrs. Perez's interest in making sure that it's been an effective use of the funds. So this is not just spending for the sake of spending or because we have the money to do so. This is really, did that work? Could this be better? But what's important to know is that we have significant resources available so that when you see in the upcoming board meetings. Contract requests or personnel requests or, you know, of that. Rest assured, we would never propose something that didn't have funding, but we have a substantial amount of money for this program. And in the, this is kind of the, I, we received money last year, but that was kind of just barely getting the program going. So this is now kind of the, the pilot year for many things. And it's just been, um, wonderful to be able to work with Mrs. Perez and. Her connections that she has with the community, her compassion that she has for our students and families, really guiding the decisions and. Being able to work with her in a way that let's really make this the best program that it can be and having the resources available to do so. Makes it all that much easier, but just because we have the significant amount of money does not mean that we will not continue to pinch every penny. And make it stretch as long as we can and, um, go as far as it can. So here we are, next steps. Right now, this time of year. Um, we get to switch because we were kind of living in different worlds. We were closing out a year, we were living in a current year, we're getting ready for the next year. But we're now, uh, taking a look at our actual employees that we've hired for this school year. And we're comparing their salary and benefit costs to those that were budgeted. That's part of what we do for the first interim. And we also are carefully monitoring our enrollment and staffing. Is the, the low class sizes are wonderful. But we still need to make sure that they're in balance. We still have requirements about class sizes with TK, with our, um, K three or TK three three, I should say. Levels, so we still continue to moni- uh, monitor that. And then our, like I mentioned before, our continued careful strategic planning is something that we always, it's just our mantra, it's how we do things. And the next time you'll probably hear from me in this format will be our first interim report, which is a big report, but it really. Um, takes into account what you'll see there is the update to the budget with all of the now we know what the COLA is. Now we know what the additional money is. We'll know better than from the budget who our actual people are, so we'll know better, um, salary costs. And we will then incorporate these carryover funds that I talked about because those now need to be added into the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So with that, I thank you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but again, I would like to acknowledge the work of Mrs. Pillen and Miss Duncan. And there's death, but they actually asked, can we go to the board meeting? Yes, please. So, yes, I, I did want to thank them though publicly for their work. Thank you. We want to thank you publicly for yours. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Martin, thank you. For, thank you. Such incredible leadership on your part. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve unaudited actuals for the year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? I will approve. Thank you, Mrs. Lopez. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Um, are we ready for a vote? Mrs. Lopez?
Hi.
Hi.
Lieber?
Hi.
Hi. And I vote I as well. On, on audit, actuals are approved. Human resources, we had an information item, we had two at our last meeting. The first was lead teacher after-school ELO program job description. This is lead teachers at each of our schools for the extended learning opportunities, but in such a great. This is lead teachers at each of our schools for the extended learning opportunities. Such a great idea. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Mr. Tavella, second. Thank you. Um, do I have any questions?
I have a comment. I, one thing that I think is so important and I'm so glad to see, and this is number six, and the example of duties provides training to the yellow after-school staff in PBIS and school-wide expectations and disciplinary issues. The positive behavioral intervention supports is such an important thing in our, in our schools for, um, you know, just the way students interact with each other and their staff. And it's so important to us during school day, and if we think it's important for kids to stay after school, that needs to carry over and have those same expectations. So I think, and, and you know, we're bringing in all of these different contractors and we've got boys and girls, and just getting everybody on the same page on, look, this is how we deal with these things, um, I think is, is super important. So I'm really glad to see that in that.
Thank you. The consistency, for sure.
Yes.
It's so critical, you know, whether it's, you know, it's, it's not something different for them. They're just, they're, you know, they keep going after school. So thank you, Mrs. Liebus. That's really a great point.
Are we ready for a vote? Aye. Mrs. Lopez.
Aye.
Mr. Tavella.
Aye.
I as well. That is approved. Um, do I have a motion to approve two, uh, six-hour new special education program assistant number two positions? They're moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, let's do our vote. Mrs. Liebus.
Aye.
Mrs. Lopez.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Lieber.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Those are approved. Uh, educational services information item only. It brings us to our consent agenda. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll make a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Do I have any questions or comments? I vote, Mr. Tavella.
Aye.
Mrs. Lieber.
Aye.
Lopez.
Aye.
Liebus.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Consent agenda passes. That takes us to future agenda items for consideration.
Well, I did bring up, I think I sent you an email recently, just today actually, about this whole problem with overlapping the high schools' board meetings. And I really think it's something we need to put on the agenda and have discussion about because I think I saw an email recently. This is Lundin, I forwarded it to you. It was back in January, and I don't remember if we ever responded to this inquiry, but she told us how many board meetings overlapped in that email, and it was a significant number. And I think we're doing a disservice to our community to continue to do this if we can come up with an alternative so that parents can attend both board meetings.
Can you resend that email to me, would you mind?
I forwarded it to you today.
Oh, perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. Great.
And I also asked if there was a response, if I could get a copy because I don't remember ever receiving one.
I don't, I don't think I did respond because I'm not sure I remember seeing it.
Okay, I forwarded it to you.
I'm listening and I'm going, oh, I don't remember that. Okay. Great. All right, that brings us to our closed session. Um, it is six fifty-three. We're going to adjourn into closed session. Thank you. And thank you to our guests for coming. We're really glad that you were here. Um, why don't we take a five-minute break? Thank you. Uh, we are back from a closed session and, uh, there were, uh, no action items taken during the meeting. There is nothing, uh, to report out. So we will adjourn at eight twenty PM.